I would like to call to order this March meeting of the City Planning Commission. And I'll read our regular statement. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting. You are here to present a case. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information. It's a simple majority vote. The members present will decide on your request. If you are here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We do not have a time limit, but brevity is appreciated. So, shall we call the roll? Mr. Faust, please.
Don.
Here.
Sawerco. Nightingale.
Present.
Manley. Jones.
Here.
Dolores.
Taggitt.
Nash.
We have a forum.
We have a forum. We're in business. First item is approval of the January minutes. You may remember, we did not have a February meeting. Do I hear any changes, additions, corrections, or any approval support? Been moved and supported, we approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Going into our new business, we have case J-150055. First? Mr. Faust?
This is a request for approval of a flower shop at 3042 South Washington as an accessory use incidental to Paradise Funeral Home. Now, this home sits just to the north of Paradise on Washington. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Randy Jackson. My address is 1710 Joy Street, here in Saginaw, Michigan, 48601. I stand before you as the administrative assistant at Paradise Funeral Chapel. Our president is Mr. Ivan Phillips. I also stand before you as one that is completing his residency at Paradise Funeral Chapel to be a licensed funeral director myself, and also stand before you as the one that does the hiring at Paradise Funeral Chapel here in Saginaw. I'd like to ask the board if you would consider allowing us to do business at the address at 3042 South Washington Avenue as a flower shop. As you know, we've been in business since 2008 here in Saginaw, and our goal and our dream was to expand our business and to provide opportunities for our community, both by being an employer and also to provide them more choices when it comes to a personalized funeral service. Now, the flower shop, yes, we've worked with local florists in the area, but having a flower shop as an accessory to our business will allow our customers to have, again, a more personalized service. They're able to go right next door and choose the blossoms, choose the flowers that they want, the arrangement that they want, and use that for their funeral service. As you know, during the grieving process, one thing that helps our families to get through their grief is to be able to have a part in the arrangement of the service. And something as simple as putting flowers together, purchasing a bird bath, and other small trinkets that you would get from a flower shop helps them to personalize their service, thus allowing them to get through their grieving stage. So, we're asking that you would allow us to provide yet another choice for our residents. Yes, we have expanded a few times in our current facility by providing state-of-the-art options such as a drive-through and things of that nature. This is along the path of expansion of Paradise Funeral Chapel. So, we would like to move forward in using this facility as a flower shop. We think that it will provide, again, more opportunities for employment. It will help provide employment on our south end and start bringing that area up instead of its continual downgrade. So, I'm asking that you would please be, if you would please consider, allowing us to do business there. Do you have any questions?
Well, I'll start with two. Can you give us an idea of what condition the building is in now? And secondly, what sorts of renovations or improvements you would plan on doing to convert it to a flower shop?
Well, at this time, we, the house is in fair condition, I would say. That's there. I mean, it does need a new roof. The back end needs, the structure needs some work that we are totally planning on getting done. We do plan on going in and pretty much gutting out the facility there so that we can make it more flower shop friendly. So, it does have a nice garage that we can, you know, house our delivery van in and things of that nature. So, structurally, it's sound, but again, we want to personalize that facility so that it can be more friendly to our customers. We do plan on putting a ramp in and making sure that our facility is up to code and up to standard to accommodate all types of people, so.
Is it a one or a two-story?
It's a two-story. Yes, sir.
The building is currently vacant, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
It should be a music studio.
Yes.
I'm familiar with it. I'm familiar with it.
There's this question for staff. It was a music studio. What was the zone of the R-01? Across the street where they sell the, I think it's the headstones, what is that zone over there?
That's down another block, I believe.
It's just a block.
I think directly across the street is R-01, and then I believe both to the north and to the south, you get into some B-1.
Is that part of the Riverfront overlay district?
No, it is not.
It is not? Okay.
Will this create jobs?
Absolutely. Again, we did send a letter to Mr. Faust. We do plan on being in operation Monday through Friday, nine to five, and also by appointment on Sundays if we need to accommodate our families on Sundays. So, yes, we'll need a full-time florist, and we do plan on having a receptionist there as well to assist. And just like we do at our funeral home, it will be somewhat 24-hour service, which means that, you know, you can call our line at any time, and we'll accommodate.
Kind of like drive-through?
You know what? I thought about that, and you never know where, you know, this business will take off.
I'm only kidding.
I know you're kidding, but you know what? It's so funny because Mr. Phillips has such a creative mind, and he's brought to Saginaw something that has, I would say, had really put us out in the world by bringing a drive-through here. So, no telling this is the start of a flower shop, but he may, you know, consider doing something bigger with it in the future after receiving your blessing at that time.
Mr. Chair. Did this company buy that property or are they leasing it?
Paradise?
Yeah. No, the 3042 property.
Did we purchase it?
Did you purchase it or lease it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You're probably aware that in order to get permission, that building would have been brought up to code?
Absolutely, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to bring it up there. Yes, sir.
What is your timetable?
Honestly, we would have liked to have had it open in February, so as soon as you approve it, we'd like to have it open within the next month to two months. We already have plans in place. We already have our contractors ready to get on it as soon as you approve it. So, we are aggressive with our timeline. This will also help us in Lansing as well. You know, we have a facility in Lansing. For every service that we provide, we offer our families a casket spray and things of that nature. So, allowing us to have this flower shop also, you know, increases that business as well. We can do the flowers right here in Saginaw versus, you know, doing it with someone local down there. Again, that takes away a little bit of, you know, being personal with our customers there, but then it allows us the flexibility to get, you know, last-minute changes done and things of that nature. So, it's going to be a lot of business both from Lansing and from Saginaw.
So, the answer is blow a monkey?
You would anticipate within a maximum 30 to 60 days?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is just for administrative paperwork, legal signature. This has nothing to do with it.
Okay, go ahead.
The legal signature is here this month. If I didn't know who did this, I wouldn't know who was the signature for this.
I see.
Because Ivan has a very unique signature.
Yes, he does.
And that's it, huh?
Yes.
Sort of like pre-form art.
Yeah, pre-form art.
Well, you could say that about a lot of signatures, actually.
But I'm just saying this music.
Do I hear any further comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion on the case.
I'm going to approve 150055, flower shop.
With what time constraint? First of June?
Well, I would go with the standard that we usually give everybody, which is six months, just to keep everything uniform.
Six months?
Yeah, but that's what we usually give everybody anyway.
Okay. It would be April, May, June, July, August, September 1st.
Okay. I know, you never know what the situation, bringing it up to code, handicap and everything, there might be some issues that way.
Right.
This gives you leeway in the event that you came across a structural problem, because if you only had 30 days and you fell under it, you'd have to go through the process and come back again.
Absolutely, and we certainly appreciate that, especially if it requires us to go back to an architect or what have you. We do appreciate you allowing us to have that leeway. You never know what you run into.
I'm sure the six months would give you plenty of time.
Absolutely.
Motion is on the floor?
Supported.
Supported?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our next case, 0056, the plan we do to construct restrooms at first, where it parked. Mr. Faust, do you want to make any comment on that, or should we have our guests?
No, I'll leave it up to our guests to explain their own process.
My name is Jay Wheeler with the firm William Kibbion Associates, 1475 South Washington, and I'm the project engineer. With me tonight is Keith Tausick, project architect at TSSF. And I'm sorry, our project will not smell as sweet as Mr. Jackson's project. Instead of a flower shop, we wish to build a restroom facility.
We hope, actually, it will.
So, it'll be a block and brick building along Franklin, similar to the existing one-story building that sits along Franklin now, that's used as kind of a backstage area for performers and a tour manager office. This building will have 20 restroom stalls for the women's side, and I believe 10 for the men's side. And obviously, they, yeah, it'll be.
It'll match the same construction. We made brick out of it, so it's probably right in the whole building. We're going to tie in, probably bring up a new, either a new water service or we're going to extend the water service from this to go over here. We brought an oversized water service in at that time. I think we brought too much in at that time because of all the sprinkler system for around this, keeping the water supply, which we won't be using that water supply spring when this facility is in operation. So, we're hoping that we got enough water. Sanitary, we'll have to do sanitary leave coming in from here just because there's no way we could tie it into the old one.
And we did talk with, we did meet with engineering, and they wanted a manhole structure on the site because of the amount of waste going through the pipe. They thought that that would be an added advantage to have that additional area to clean out the pipe should that occasion arise. So, we went north of the building with the manhole structure and then west to the sewer in Franklin Street.
In looking at that, I was not sure where the existing structure is. Can you tell me where?
The existing building is right here. The existing structure comes out here, here, and that's where the winds are. That's the first wind hole. This is the high center here.
The big white pavilion.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, be related to the building structure that's actually on grade where everything else is, it's a low structure. How many phases have you gone through this? Where's the, our, 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 what's in there?
Like, one, two, or three?
One phase. When you go on to phase one, we originally were showing the structure to be over on the other side.
Exactly.
Yeah, we were showing it over there, and after they've operated now for one season, they deeded, we don't want it over there, we want it over on this side. So, that's why we're going back to showing it.
How many other phases are you going to go through there? You don't know?
We're not sure at this point. We are designing this, actually extending this restroom facility for another block that we might need up. So, I don't know if that would happen right away or not.
Yeah, I don't know. I just remember the other drawing, that was not where the restroom.
Yeah, they were coming along that side. Coming along the bridge over there.
Yeah, exactly.
Did I hear you say the exterior was brick?
Exterior is brick.
Brick, okay.
Was that intentional to wait a year before this so that?
It wasn't necessarily intentional. Had the other structure come in less money, we would have probably came back a lot sooner.
I think that had to do with funding, too.
It had to do with funding, so, and now they've come up with the funding, they want to pull this portion out. What they've been doing is they've been lining up along over here in this area with all the porta potters.
Forty potters.
So, they want to get rid of that, and make this their vendor truck area where you pick up all the discussions and things like that. That's why they want to get the porta potters away.
So, that end is near the street?
Right. This is over here is actually Chaz's.
Yeah.
Chaz's should be right there between, like, the pet center and that part.
Who will be the owner of that property, of that building? Who's the actual owner of that property? Is it the county?
I think the county owns it, the property.
Yeah, it's my understanding. It's county.
It's county.
Well, that would seem like a really good addition to the facility.
Yeah.
Especially if they're serving beer.
I've heard plenty of complaints about some of your bigger concerts, not enough restrooms, and have to walk down to the various establishments to try to find someplace to go to the restroom.
Yeah, they do open up across the road if they'd want to go into the restroom itself, but.
There's still a lot.
So, it's an inconvenience. You have to go all the way to the park across the street and then come back.
How much completion time would you need to exercise this?
Not very much, but we'll take the standard six months.
You'll take the standard six months?
Having heard about that, it sounds okay.
Having heard about it, we'll.
You weren't paying attention.
Yeah, we have, the contract is going to be spent early, so our drawings are almost ready to go at this point. Basically, the crosslots have come off.
All the below-ground stuff is going to be done first, I see.
Paper moving.
I know we've done before that because they want to use it for some of the summary of the town.
Any further questions about this case? Comments, questions, thoughts? Not? Twenty-one, twice, right? entertain a motion to approve the case?
I move that we approve case 150056 with a completion date of six months.
Your approval of that motion?
Second.
Second motion is approved, moved, and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I'll put it onward.
The phones will be different again.
Jay, how soon do they get to the board?
They just had their pre-construction meeting, so they'll probably be in there in another month or so.
Another month?
Yeah.
Are they going to be tearing up that rear end for parking?
Yeah, that's like phase one and two.
You probably want that hauled out of there before you do any, initially, work.
Yeah, I would think you got, probably a monitor.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, be good.
Thanks a lot.
See ya.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too.
Next item is discussion of vacation of Federal Street between Water and Washington.
Yeah, just to give you a little background information, SVRC recently purchased the old Saginaw News building with the idea of creating a year-round farmers' marketing part of that building. Through their plans that have not been submitted yet to the planning commission, but will be coming within a couple of months, they would like to vacate Federal Street between Water Street and Washington. Now, some of the things that usually happen when we vacate a street is we retain an easement for all utilities and all public utilities, and usually there must be special permissions given to build anything on the street. So, when they come back to you, to the planning commission, with their construction plans, and at that point, you would approve them building a pavilion over the street. They've had some preliminary discussions with engineering. I don't believe there's any major problems. There are utilities under the street that they may need to get to at some point, and I imagine that when the design of the pavilion comes about, there will be a way for the city to access the utilities. But at this point, that hasn't come to you. We're here now just to see if you would agree to vacate that block of Federal.
As this grew to Memorial Day, right? That's where it starts.
Does that actually increase the size of the farmer's market? It doesn't seem to me like that would be a lot bigger than what they have now.
I believe it gives them, it's been a while since I heard, I believe it gives them the option to have up to 55 vendors somewhere in that vicinity.
Or did that plan also involve some of that space between the street and the building? They have a, like a terrace there in front, I wonder?
I haven't seen any final plans yet, so I'm not sure. Now, part of the plan is the Firestone Building will be torn down, and my understanding is that the Bodners from the Bancroft have agreed, you know, when we vacate a street, each property owner gets half of the street. The Bodners have agreed to give up their share to SVRC, and I guess there's some other arrangements as far as leasing of parking spaces and things like that. So, so part of that pavilion may be built where the Firestone Building is.
So, that would actually give SVRC the whole, the whole street?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's quite, that's quite big, to be honest.
That would be certainly two, four rows.
Now, they'll only be using part of that because to get into the Bancroft parking lot, they will come off of Federal Street, and there'll be a cul-de-sac there, and then they will access that and head north into Bancroft Parking Area.
So, it's not the whole street then?
No. It's probably only a third to a half of this street.
That cul-de-sac has to come back to us for approval though, correct?
I'm sorry?
All we're doing is vacating.
Yes, you're just vacating. Any, any other plans will come to us.
But you mentioned the cul-de-sac. That's, that's another story.
Right, that will come to us.
So, if we vacate, and if we move to vacate, when will this vacate, vacate, this can actually come into fruition?
Well, if I remember right, after you make a recommendation to city council, it goes to city council, there's a holdover of 30 days, then it is brought back up at council. So, I would expect that it would be at least two months.
Okay, this is for Larry, when you could be seeing a city council. I mean, I like the idea, but I see a serious problem when the people that are going, what is it, Water Street? When they're going to go north of Water Street, when they're going north, you cannot, if you get down to Genesee Street, you're not supposed to turn left.
Right, yeah.
Everybody's going to start turning left, so asking it to be taken under consideration with traffic.
It is true.
Good point. Good, very good point.
I will bring that up to engineering.
I mean, everybody turns that way anyway, but that's not what the signs say. It used to have a light or something there, and that was taken down quite a lot of downtown though.
Yeah, I see a lot of people turning left there, even though the sign is playing.
But you're also now dealing with quite an increased volume of traffic.
Right, there's something that has to be looked at. Concept of vacation is great, but it's just, the logistics is great, but that corner's going to cause problems.
You can eliminate that by turning onto a one-way street.
Well, there could also just be signs at the end and the beginning of the block that said, right turn only ahead.
To Water Street. Federal. To Genesee.
It's just a block.
I know, but if you turn it out to a one-way street, it would eliminate the left turns on westbound traffic on.
Yeah, well.
On Genesee, which is, that's a, that's a dangerous spot there.
They could actually block off the street before the planes came back, huh? Because they're on the street.
They could, or if you make the recommendation to vacate, we may hold up until the plans come in.
I was going to say, we would want to see the whole plan, not just.
Right.
The vacating.
They just, before they do their plans, they wanted to know that they could vacate the street.
So, our answer is, we're not going to vacate until we know the whole plan, so we're putting it right back on.
Mike, the Saginaw News had some property right on the river. Did these people inherit that property also with the purchase of the News, or just, just the site here that we're looking at now?
He's late, he's talking about the parking.
The parking lot.
I believe that either SVRC is getting that, or part of that property is in the Downtown Development Authority's name, and I don't know if the DDA was going to deed that to SVRC. That I'm not sure of at this point.
Well, the Saginaw News owned a substantial piece of property that they used for a parking lot right, right on the river.
And that would be parking for the farmer's market.
Well, it would. We know that for sure?
Yes.
So, that kind of argues against any possibility of making Water Street one-way then. So, that kind of argues against any possibility of making Water Street one-way then.
And I, there's been discussion about that over the last year, even before this project. And I think the general consensus has been that it would remain a two-way street. That there were too many problems making it a one-way street.
Okay, we will expect to hear more about that. A lot more.
The last I heard is it would probably be mid to late summer when you get the plans for the farmers' market. They have a whole fundraising campaign in front of them.
So the farmers' market as of this May will operate where they always have, off of Washington?
That's right.
Okay.
So when will they get eliminated from Washington?
That has not been determined yet. I believe it's based on a couple of factors, and one of those, I think the decision was to be made sometime this month as to where Delta wanted to locate. And then there'll be a lot of preliminary work that will have to be done there as well. So the farmers' market at this point is expecting to stay at their current site for this season.
I would think so. So the next item is discussion of Niagara between Madison and Ames, again, are vacated, which I think we are all pretty familiar with.
Okay, yes, I believe in November you approved a plan for condominiums on, on Hamilton Street. And what I'm asking to do at this point is vacate Niagara Street, which would be behind where those plans are. Now, it will not be that whole two-block area. It will be from Madison, and it didn't show up on, well, maybe, did it show up on your map? I think it did. I drew a line. It's pretty much where Dynamic Corvette is. If you were to draw from their property line straight to the east across Niagara, that, from there to the north to Madison would be vacated.
There's another.
It doesn't really show.
There's another business back there that has a driveway back there to correctly.
Right, and that would leave that driveway open as a public street. Actually, I think it's, I think we're trying to keep open approximately a hundred and twenty feet north of Ames. I, I think you can even see it on your map, there's a dimension of a hundred and twenty feet, and that goes from Ames up until that line that is on the north side of Dynamic Corvette.
Like, that railroad line is still active?
That line is still active, and there will be, again, there'll be an easement for all public utilities as well as an easement for the railroad line. In, in most cases, the railroad owns the property where they have their lines. In this case, they do not own that. They've just used an easement that was probably granted a hundred years ago. And they continue to use that. So that will be open. I believe, I wasn't here in November, but I believe that the plans, and from talking to the developer, that they don't plan on building anything on this street. They just wanted that property to be part of their yard.
Yeah.
And the city, I believe there's an agreement that was reached where we, the city owns the property to the east, and we will give up our share of the easement for that development project.
So you want to vacate it from the south side of Madison to a line running east and west, which would be the northern lot line of the Corvette shop?
Right, I believe on the plan it's the north, northeastern line of Lot Six of that subdivision.
Lot Six.
Which you, I don't believe you can see on your map. But it is that line that you see that's running on the northerly side of Dynamic Corvette.
These are, these are, these are three sixty-foot properties there. One which is a parking lot at the corner of Ames, then there's the Corvette shop. And then the other sixty is part of the chain across this.
That's correct.
So that lot line is where, that lot line that crosses Niagara is where you want to, you want, you want vacated?
That's correct, from there to the north to Madison.
Which gives the property owner at the end of that block access not only from Ames Street, but from what's left of Niagara.
That's right, they'll be able to pull into their parking lot there. Their, it's Easy Pro delivery service, and that parking lot behind Dynamic Corvette belongs to Easy Pro. So that would be a public street up to the other side of their parking lot.
Who owns Easy Pro, the building? Is Easy Pro?
Her last name is Larkin.
So those two pieces of property are owned by two different people?
Right.
Quick question, like, is this property Block Point nine, is that still in the floodplain or is that outside of floodplain?
It's part of us in the floodplain for some reason. Part of us in the floodplain.
I believe part of it is.
That's how I remember the plan. There was a corner there, a pretty big corner.
As part of the project, and I'm not sure that it was, they will have to get an elevation certificate to make sure they comply.
That's one thing that I remember that I brought up.
So this will come back to us at some point for a vote?
No, I'd like you, if you would, to vote on this one tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, then, in that case, are there any further questions regarding vacating of Niagara Street?
I would move recommending, I mean, recommending City Council to move or vacating a portion of Niagara Street. I would move. With support?
Moved and supported that we approve the forwarding, I guess, to City Council, like the vacating of Niagara and Madison. Any further questions, comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that's all the new business.
The Federal Street, I don't think they voted on it, did they?
I don't.
The Federal Street?
They didn't take a map. No, no, I don't think they did. I don't think, we're not, I don't think, we're not going to, I don't think we're going to, right?
That's coming back to us, is it not?
Yeah, I thought you guys wanted to see at least some preliminary.
The whole plan, yeah.
Okay.
We would like to see where the cul-de-sac and everything else.
Again, under old business, we have an item, election of chair and vice chair, that was put off two months ago.
Okay, so now, face the music.
I know.
Chair is open for nominations for the position of chair and vice chair. Do I hear any nominations?
Who was the chair and vice chair now?
I am chair, this gentleman right here is vice chair. You didn't know that?
I knew that you were. I forgot the guy's name over there.
Oh, that guy, yeah. Well, he's, it's kind of a funny name.
How do you feel about staying in the same positions?
It's okay with me.
What about Mr. Knight?
I mean, I'm fine with it. I think I've only had to step up to the plate once in Jim's absence, and I don't think I screwed it up too bad.
No, I heard, I heard good reports. Are there any further nominations?
Just recommend, just keep the same with the same.
Somebody's seconded.
Going once, going twice? Okay, nominations are now closed. So now we need an official.
Now you need to go ahead and vote on it.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Nice, good press, it's cool.
So now we get to hear about Crosspoint Chapel and how they are doing there.
After the last meeting, I did call Rob Troutman, who was a gentleman that was here at the meeting when you gave approval. They have made some progress. There's a, there's a website called reachsagana.org.
Reach Saginaw?
Reach Saginaw.org. And on the right side of the first page of that is, I believe it's called Progress. And if you click on there, they have a timeline of what they've accomplished. They've run into more problems than they expected. The boiler still is not working.
Oh.
But they've been, they've found someone to work on it. They've been raising funds as they go along. They've been doing painting. They have a work session, I believe it's the last Saturday of every month. And one of the last sessions, they had fifty to sixty people working there. As far as events from their timeline, I could only see one. They had a film night where they showed a movie, and I think it said there were over a hundred people in attendance. They've still been doing some neighborhood recruitment, and they, and Rob said that a lot of the people that are helping out are neighbors, that come down and spend a couple of hours.
That's the old school, right?
Right.
Yes.
It looks like they're trying to keep the facility and the landscape nice.
Yeah, they've found.
It's not overgrown, it's not, it's, it looks good.
They've found somebody that volunteered to do the yard work for them.
And that's a sizable yard.
Sizable.
So, they, and all along the way, they're raising funds, and every time they get some more money, they do something else. I believe in that timeline, it said that they were hoping for a grand opening of July first this year. So they're not moving along as quickly as they thought when they came to you, but there is progress that's taking place.
They addressed the last meeting of the Neighborhood, Northmore Neighborhood Association. And I've listened to his pitch several times, very, very aggressive, their plan. They are leasing space from another church now on Barnard, just north of Shattuck. They're leasing space there. What time of the day or the week, I don't know. They, I, I know that the city is now billing for taxes. They have fulfilled their obligation to turn that into a church, and they are not tax exempt. The city is now billing for taxes.
They, um.
I'm not sure what I can say.
They went to the board to review last Friday to appeal that decision, and I don't know what decision was reached. I believe the place on Barnard is the place they had originally when he was here last year.
I think it was, it was the Barnard address.
They're leasing space here.
So, so how come they're not a church?
The assessor's office, I talked to them last week, they, they didn't see where they were having church services or church activities there. The case law behind all of that is very fuzzy. There are cases where, I remember one case on Lake Michigan, where the church owned property, they came up and had a retreat there one weekend of the year, and they were tax exempt.
I'm going to say, what's the definition, who can define what a church activity is?
Right, and that's, that seems to be the problem. And the assessor's office at this point has said, "We don't believe that you're performing church functions there or church activities, so we think you should be on the tax roll." And I don't know what the answer from the board review was last week.
There was a similar discussion this morning at the land bank meeting pertaining to the Jacobson Building, which was bought by a church that's still not on the tax roll.
No, actually, a good part of that building has been on the tax rolls for all the years.
It has been?
Yes, it has. There's a portion of it that was not, but a good majority of it was on the tax roll because.
Which portion is not?
At one point, and this is a couple of years ago, Larry, at one point, I believe they were holding services in a room on the second floor. And so that part, whatever the square footage of that area was, was made exempt, but the rest of the building was still on the tax roll.
And they own the entire property, do they?
I think they should.
I think the museum owns a little bit, and, yeah, they, they've had an investor in Texas.
The museum does own the part they occupy?
I believe they own the corner of the.
I knew they had the space, I think they own it. Yeah.
Are they still functioning as a church on Mallard Street, I believe?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Last time, the investor came here to the city, they were under different, they weren't under the church.
They weren't?
That was last year.
Okay, I'm not sure whose name it's in now.
It's under an LLC.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
So. So somebody's weaving a web. Gee, that never happens in real estate. I do not see a lot of people here to make any public comments.
They're there, they're just invisible.
Well, they're very invisible.
They came dressed as seats tonight.
You could be chair of this, stuff like that.
I guess I found on my last.
No, no, I have no idea how they're doing. It's crazy.
Seeing as how we have no further business, we are adjourned officially.